Okay, good evening everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order this evening. We are beginning with the Community Consolidated School District 46 Board of Education Truth and Taxation Hearing this evening, Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, six P. M. here at Frederick School. I need a call to order please with a roll call?
Mack?
Here.
Brayden?
Here.
Nash?
Here.
Halverson?
Here.
Hune?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
And Weedman?
Here.
Very good. Everybody's here. Would you join me for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's truth and taxation hearing, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Miller?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Hune?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Wildman for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I will be presenting the two thousand and twenty-five property tax levy for Community Consolidated School District forty-six. This presentation outlines the process, key figures and rationale behind the levy, what is required as an annual step in funding our schools. Here's the mission. As with all our financial decisions, our levy process is guided by the district's mission, empowering learners, creating equity and cultivating community. These are not just words. They serve as the foundation of how we allocate resources and make financial recommendations. Our goal is to ensure every dollar supports equitable opportunities and high-quality education for all students. The work also connects directly to our strategic plan goals and board policies. We're committed to transparency, ensuring our financial practices are clear and that they direct and support district priorities. So here's the timeline. We held a preliminary discussion on September seventeenth. On October fifteenth, the tentative levy was presented. The legal public notice was published on October sixteenth, and tonight we are holding the public hearing and adopting the final levy. To frame the levy discussion, it's helpful to recall where revenues come from. The majority of CCSD's operating funds are generated locally through property taxes, which account for fifty-six percent of our total budget. On the expenditure side, most of our spending is invested directly in people and classrooms. Combined salaries and benefits represent the largest categories. So let's jump directly into the levy itself. The property tax extension limitation law, PTEL, limits how much property tax revenue can increase from one year to the next. Limitation applies to the PTEL limiting rate, which is different from the property tax rate, and the Lake County Office ultimately determines the final tax extension based on our levy request. So I'm not gonna go through all these. I'm just gonna go through a couple of them. The tax levy is the total amount that we request. The limiting rate is the highest rate that can be extended. The extension refers to the total taxes, and CPI and E V are explained there. For the two thousand and twenty-five levy, a few important figures stand out. CPI is two point nine. We're estimating new construction. Is that number there? And our final extension was forty-two point six million, and the proposed twenty-five extension is forty-four million. Including debt service and our C. D. O. I. M. R. F. payment, the total extension equals forty-five point one million dollars. This represents a three point two percent increase over last year. And then finally, on the Public Act one oh two zero nine eight zero eight nine five, I have to do this one. Districts are required to disclose their cash reserves and the debt payment for the year, so that's the disclosure. That concludes the presentation of the two thousand and twenty-five property tax levy. I'll now open twenty questions.
Any members of the board have questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Wellman. There is an opportunity for public comment. Is there any sign-ups for? No sign-ups for public comment? Okay. Okay, then, I need a motion to adjourn the truth and taxation hearing, and then we're gonna go and re-adjourn into the board meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Hune?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And Brayden?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I need to call to order with a roll call, please, for the regular board meeting evening. We're still here at Frederick School, Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, now at six oh seven, six seven, six oh seven P. M. Okay, all right? You are welcome. Okay, you, I'm never gonna get that opportunity again. Okay.
I'll move.
Mack?
Here.
Brayden?
Here.
Nash?
Here.
Halverson?
Here.
Hune?
Aye. Here.
Miller?
Here.
And Weedman?
Here.
Great, thank you very much. And similarly, I do need a motion to approve the evening for the regular board meeting, the agenda for the regular board meeting.
I'll move. A second.
Okay.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Hune?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Public comments, has that changed? Okay. Okay, we are on to the board reports section of our agenda this evening, so this week I'll start down here with Ms. Halverson.
I have no update this week.
Thank you. Ms. Hune? Mrs. Nash?
Brief update. Had the opportunity to partake in our Equity and Inclusion Committee Call on November seventeenth. It was really nice to have the committee back around the horn again. Got some exciting updates from our team just with regards to our two-way dual-language programs that we've been hearing about, and I won't steal any of Mrs. Gluck's thunder. I'm certain it'll be covered in the superintendent report, but just a lot of hard work and intentionality and commitment going to make sure that, from an equity lens, right, that we have pathways for our students, both to and from speaking Spanish and English, and I'm just super excited about the value that that's gonna bring to our students and community as a whole. And then we also had an opportunity just to just debrief and just have a collective exhale, and I think that's needed, not only in academia, but just as a community as a whole, and so it was really, really way to kick off the first meeting of this quarter, so thank you, Ms. Amy Gluck.
Mrs. Brayden?
I just give a whole heart of second to Ms. Nash's equity report out and no other report.
Great. Mrs. Miller?
Yeah, two things. Just a reminder, there's an email in your box about immigration connection. They are available to do a board presentation just about the law and changes in the law, so if we're interested in that, just please let me know through that email, and then I'll either find out more information or not. Thank you to those of you who have already responded, but I'll send that again. And then also wanna thank our whole community for the food drive. At the same time, we had our elementary schools, all of them, our middle school and Frederick, everyone contributed food. It was incredible to drop that food off. Having done it before, the food pantry is always generously supplied, but this time was absolutely amazing. There was food floor to ceiling around the entire collection room, and that was before the scouts came in and before the one twenty-seven food drive. So, yeah, so thank you to everyone who participated, everyone who coordinated students, everyone, everyone, everyone who dropped things off, even individual contributions. So that was a huge success, and thank you again, Dr. Glickman, for your nudge on that. Really appreciate that. And of course, to all of the work Andrea Young has done and the other members of the Community Engagement Committee who were super helpful in picking up donations, dropping out boxes all week. So, thank you to everyone.
Mr. Weedman?
I have nothing.
Okay. I would, since this is our last meeting before the Thanksgiving holiday, I'd like to take an opportunity to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and express my gratitude on behalf of myself and the board of all the work that we do in the district, the educators, the staff, the O. N. M. staff, the O. N. M. team, everybody who directly impacts our families, our communities with the food drive, with the equity audits, with the wonderful concerts that we get to see, all of the entertainment. I've gotten to see the rehearsal a couple times for The Lion King out in the hallway there. I think I was about to be recruited, but it didn't happen, so my dream was shattered. But the work that you all do and the work that we get to witness is something that is truly exceptional and truly grateful for that, and it really resonates in our community, with our families, and especially with our kids. So thank you, and wishing you all a wonderful Thanksgiving, since we will not see you before that happens. That's my little report. That brings the board reports section to a conclusion, and I will hand it over to Dr. Glickman for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mack. Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome people to our board meeting. It's a nice crowd tonight because it's an exciting evening, so I'd like to thank our staff members that are here. I'd like to thank our administrators, who are also staff members that are here, and some special guests that we'll meet in a little bit. I also am very grateful to our community for what was truly a spectacular food drive. Thank you, Kristy, and the rest of C. E. C. getting that going. Principals that are here, thank you so much for what you did to get it over the line at your buildings, including a little bit of friendly competition that was going on in a Google chat that we'll talk about another time. I'm gonna hand this over to Mrs. Gluck to talk for just a moment about the presentation that Mrs. Bogren brought to the Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting this week.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. So, yeah, I'd like to thank Amber Bogren for coming to join us on Monday evening for Equity and Inclusion Meeting. She walked us through our two-way dual-language programming that we will be implementing starting next year in kindergarten, and walked us through how we got, came to the decision that we did related to that programming, and gave us some background about what will be included in that programming, and really asked for feedback from the committee as we start to have conversation about a lottery process that will be possibly coming for students to be able to participate and families to be able to participate in that program, and so to help us to think through, to provide Amber with some information to what kinds of questions might we want to be thinking about as we head into that. So it was great conversation, and we walked through the timeline for what that will look like and just some of the planning that's already started. So, thank you, Amber, or Amber, for joining us.
Thank you. And finally, it is Board Appreciation Month. Actually, November fifteenth was Board Appreciation Day, which is somewhat fitting that it was a Saturday, and I say it's fitting because our board, a group of caring community members and volunteers, I wanna clarify, board members are always volunteers. They volunteer their time, and they are regularly busy doing board work in some way or another, or doing something for our school district on the weekend, while also taking care of their families and taking care of any of their own professional responsibilities. It's also fitting that we are honoring our board tonight, on the very same night, that the board is hiring a new superintendent, because hiring a superintendent is one of a school board's most important responsibilities. And to illustrate that, board, you may recognize this book, you all have one, The Basics of Governance. For those who don't know, this is a book that board members all receive when they are becoming a part of the board and being trained, right? There's a whole process you have to go through. So I brought it in, a little weird aloud for just a moment. So, first of all, there are six pieces of responsibility that a board has. Board, I know you all know this, but our community may not. One is clarifies the district purpose. Two is connects with the community. Three is employs a superintendent. Four is delegates authority. Five is monitors performance, and six is takes responsibility for itself. And so, speaking of that employs a superintendent part, the very next page is a key message about board and superintendent relationships. I'm gonna read it. Don't worry, it's not long. It says, "An effective school board develops and maintains a productive relationship with the superintendent. The employment relationship consists of mutual respect and clear understanding of respective roles, responsibilities, and expectations." And so that's the formal language. I wish to say that that language of productive relationship and mutual respect, board, you go so far beyond that language. You go deeply beyond those words, as you've offered so much trust to me over the past seven years and true kindness. So, to our new superintendent, who is yet to be named, but might be sitting in the room, you have hit a pot of gold with this Board of Education in School District forty-six. Their communication with each other and with you will be stellar. Their questions will be insightful and thoughtful, and their intent will be pure every single time. So, board, on behalf of our entire administrative team, we thank you for your time, your service, your compassion, your commitment to the community, the students, and the staff. In a little while, we will say thank you with cake, but first, I believe we have another agenda item, Dr. Mack, that's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Glickman. We do have an action item tonight, and I'm gonna call for the motion first, and then I'll make a comment. I need a motion to approve the appointment and the contract for the new superintendent.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm gonna make comments first. As Dr. Glickman indicated, one of the most important roles of a school board is to select and appoint and work with a superintendent that guides the district, and we are incredibly privileged tonight to introduce the next superintendent of Community Consolidated School District forty-six, Dr. Alfonso Carmona, who will begin his service on July first, two thousand and twenty-six. Welcome also to some very special people who are in attendance with him, who I've had an opportunity to meet beforehand, and a couple are watching online, so I've been told. So I would like to welcome Dr. Carmona's wife, Bernadette, here. We have two of his daughters here as well, Amanda and Gabby, are here with us this evening, and I am told that online and watching us, hopefully you can hear us and see us, and I'll wave, are his daughters Adriana and Daniela. And so, welcome to this really special evening to be here with your husband, with your father, a very, very proud moment as we share this. Dr. Carmona comes to us with a very distinguished record of educational leadership, and most recently serving as the acting chief of education officer for Chicago Public Schools. His experience from leading the system-wide initiatives as CPS, one of the largest public school systems in the United States, serving as a principal and a bilingual teacher reflects both depth and breadth in his service to the students. Throughout our national search, conducted with the support of the marvelous team over at B. W. U. P. and Associates, Dr. Carmona consistently demonstrated a strong commitment to equity, innovation, and student success, all hallmarks of this board. His collaborative leadership style and dedication to continuous improvement align very closely with the values and mission that this board and District forty-six has set forth, and that mean everything to us. We are very excited to welcome Dr. Carmona to our district community, and we look forward to the vision and stability that he, that you, will bring to our eight schools and the many villages and communities and families that we serve. Please join me in a round of applause in welcoming Dr. Alfonso Carmona as the next superintendent of Community Consolidated District forty-six. I would also be profoundly remiss to not take this opportunity to begin the deep gratitude to Dr. Glickman for her dedication, service, and the passion that you have shown for District forty-six, for our staff, for our communities, and most importantly, for our kids and our families. I know that we have, oh, I did it again. I know that we have another six or seven months to go left, but my kids are going to be mortified if they watch this video. But I wanted to begin the thank you process now, because it's gonna take me time to do that over the next six months. So thank you for everything that you have done for our community. We have a motion, and we have a second, so we can vote.
Weedman? Aye. Mack?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Hune?
Aye.
And Halverson?
Aye.
Congratulations, Dr. Carmona. Yes, yeah. Would you like to say a few words? Yes. There's a little microphone thingy over there. Just press the little button on there. There you go.
Excellent. Can you hear me? Excellent. I don't have any six-seven jokes.
I think I've worn it out for the evening, so.
Well, mostly because my daughters are not necessarily gonna be happy about it anyways, but good evening, board president, members of the board, and members of the Grace Lake community. With a profound sense of honor and deep humility, I am thrilled to accept the contract to serve as the next superintendent of Grace Lake District forty-six. Board members, thank you for your immense trust and confidence in me, to my wife and my four daughters, my two younger girls that are here tonight, Amanda and Gabby, and to my two older girls who have been sending me text messages for the last couple of minutes, including a little joke about the six-seven. Thank you for all your support and for, you know, supporting me along the way in my career. It means everything to me. As I mentioned to the board during the interview process, I was drawn to District forty-six because of the palpable commitment to student success and for that reputation as a place where excellence is the expectation. My core belief is very simple. Every student in every school, every day, deserves a world-class educational experience. But this vision is not about me. It's about us. It's about partnering with our administrators, with our dedicated educators and staff, with our involved parents, with our board, and of course, with the greater Grace Lake community. Our path forward will focus on three key pillars: academic growth, student and staff well-being, and community connection. The work ahead of us is significant, and I am ready to roll up my sleeves. The transition will begin soon, and I'm committed to spending a great deal of time doing one thing about all, listening. I want to hear from our teachers and staff about what they need to try. I want to hear from our parents about their aspiration for their children, and most importantly, I want to hear from our students, specifically about their dreams and aspirations. I am very excited about this new chapter for my family and me, as well as for District forty-six. I promise you, a superintendent who will be accessible, who will be transparent, and will be absolutely dedicated to the future of this district. Looking forward to our partnership. Thank you so much.
Another very important role of the board is to invite everybody to enjoy some cake. So, we're gonna pause the board meeting for now, and then we will be back. For members watching online, we are pausing for a momentary celebration, and we will be back.
All right. We are going to continue the board meeting. Everybody's welcome to stay or leave, however you choose. You got the cake, so I would run if I were you. Good night, good night. Good night. Congratulations again. Good night, good night, good night. Yeah. That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on with. We are, yes. We're going to move with the, along with the Finance Committee portion to the meeting, so I'm going to invite Mr. LaCroy to come to the table to sit for the Finance Committee. Is just Mr. LaCroy? Yes. Okay. That's right. The first item on here are the audit results. So I'll pass that over to Mr. Wellman, right? Or no, to you.
Yeah, you can pass it to me.
Pass it to you, you pass it to, yep.
I can introduce, this is our audit partner from Baker Tilly, who's going to be here to tell you about the audit results. Just a quick reminder to those of you who are here for the first time, and this is the Audit Committee right now. So for the purpose of the Finance Committee, it's now the Audit Committee, and this is your opportunity to talk directly to your board-appointed CPA firm and ask any question you may have about the audit which was completed through June 30th of 2025.
All right, thanks, Chris. And thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. I don't know why everybody wanted to stay. Before I get started, I do want to thank Chris and Marco and his team for the efforts they put into preparing for the audit. The audit process is a good five, six-month process. It's a journey. And we come in, interrupt the day-to-day with a million questions and requests on top of what they have to do, you know, each and every day. And without their responsiveness, professionalism, and ability to get us what we need to do our job, we can't issue the audit on time, be here today, having this discussion. So just thanks to them and all their hard work for the audit process, they make our job easier. So I really appreciate that. Tonight, I'm going to give you just a nice, high-level overview of the audit process. I'm not going to get any numbers in my presentation, but obviously, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me or wait till I'm done. I'll be very short and sweet for you. And then, any questions you have, I'll be glad to answer for you. So tonight, I'm going to first run through each of the different reports you get or that we issue on your behalf. The first one is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That's the big document. That is a report that paints the full picture of the district's financial health for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. You know, we work with Chris and his team to compile that beast every single year. And I want you to, as a board, to know that information is your information. It's your numbers, it's what you put out to the public to tell them how things went. We help put it in all the right formats and prescribe standards and all that good stuff, but really, it's your information. The only information in that report that comes from us as the audit firm is the section called the Independent Auditors' Report. That's us telling you and anybody else who uses financial statements, can they rely upon that information? We issue what's called an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance we can provide. That means, we don't look at every penny, dollar, right? We would be, we'd live in Chris's office, and he'd be sick of us very quickly. But we do do a lot of deep dive into the important information to ensure that that can be relied upon and paints an accurate picture of the district's financial health. So that you, bondholders, residents, whoever it may be, can rely upon that information and know, this is how District 46 did this year, and this is where it stands as of June 30th. So that's, that's the gold star. That's the pat on the back for, you did what you needed to do. We can issue the audit and with a clean bill of health from that regard. So most of what we talk about is kind of geared towards the negative. The report, the independent audit report itself, is the positive. That's the thumbs up that you did a job well done, and we were able to get everything we needed to do to issue that report. If you're going to read any section of that report, there's two sections I recommend reading. The Management Discussion and Analysis and the Transmitter Letter. Those two sections in conjunction really give you all the high points for what happened during the year. That M-DNA is really the financial nuts and bolts of, hey, how did things change? What big-dollar value impacts were there? Whereas the Transmitter Letter gives you a lot of non-financial context as to what has happened, is happening, and will be happening in the future. So if you're going to read any section, if you don't read every single page, if you're going to read anything, it would be those two sections I do recommend reading that. That'll give you a really good picture of everything that happened during the year. In addition to that report, there are a bunch of other required deliverables reports we have to issue in accordance with audit standards, state statutes, and things of that nature. One of the other reports we issue is called, is really ISB's Annual Financial Report. That is the State Board of Education's required financial reporting to them in their prescribed format. It more or less is a representation of what's an annual comprehensive financial report. We do issue an opinion on that that says, this information speaks back to your financial statements. So that everything in there that is a financial statement number is in agreement with what's in your financial statement. So that those two documents are kind of interlinked together, and they're in agreement with each other. The one thing I always point out in that document is the Financial Profile Score. That is the State Board of Education's methodology for evaluating financial health of districts in Illinois. And they massage these numbers themselves as they get through the process of a year of getting every district's report in. Based upon the calculations in the AFR that was submitted to ISB, you're at a 3.35, which is a market improvement over last year's 3.1. So while it's still on the upward trajectory, there was a great improvement from the prior year, which is great to see. One of the other reports we issue, kind of the bigger reports we issue, is our deep dive into your federal spending. We call it the Single Audit. We have not issued that report yet. And the reason why is because the federal government has not passed the annual rules and regulations regarding how we do that work. We have drafts of these documents called the Compliance Supplement. It's a way, it says, every federal award, they list out, what are you supposed to look at? What's a requirement for these awards? We have the drafts of it, but OMB has not passed, has not authorized or approved that final version with the shutdown of the federal government. Obviously, that has extended that. We don't know when we're going to get the, kind of the go-ahead. There's not a single, single audit in the entire country that can be issued for '6, '30, year and afterward. We're not allowed to. There's nothing we can do. So we've done the work. We're kind of sitting on it. You know, as of right now, we did test your special education grants, your IDEA cluster. So that's the program that we deep dove into this year. We know what we have to do. We just can't issue anything because the feds haven't said you can go ahead and do that yet. We have identified no findings to date on that and do not anticipate any. So you will eventually get a clean bill of health on that report when we are able to issue that. So I want to let you know, because it is a report that's usually handed out as part of this, but we can't because of that. Kind of our hands are tied there. So if there are a question, or anybody is like, hey, where is this thing? We have about 60 of them to get out at the same time, whenever we get to go, get to go ahead. So it'll be fun for all of us. One, another report that is issued, you do have today, it's kind of just a short, little paper handout. That's usually included in that Single Audit Report. It's called the Government Auditing Standards Report. That is where we dive into basic your overall internal control structure and processes to identify any significant weaknesses that generate risk to the district, right? If there are gaps in your process and your controls, that would indicate to you, hey, this is something wrong, but there's a risk here. And we're required to communicate those to you in a couple of different formats. That document is an opinion we issue. We have to issue it in conjunction with the financial statements, even though it usually goes in that other report. I don't know why. That's just how the rules were written and they work. So we issued it separately. That will eventually be included in the Single Audit Report when it is released. But we issued it, we have to, in conjunction with the financial statements. So we're presenting to you now in kind of a standalone format at the moment. In addition to that, the last report statutory-wise that we have, are in the process of issuing right now is for the Government Accountability and Transparency Unit, which is a relatively new organization of the state. It's another kind of slice and dice of your numbers. It's used by all state agencies except for ISB to monitor the funding that they pass through to other organizations. For school districts, it's a bit duplicative because ISB's had their prescribed formats for a long time. None of the other state agencies really have really had that or a consistent format. So unfortunately, school districts have to be tagged onto that because every governmental, any or, effectively, any entity that receives funding from the state of Illinois is required to submit that report on an annual basis. So we usually do that as part of that Single Audit because those numbers are really connected to each other. We're in the process of filing that right now, and that'll be issued shortly. And there's a longer runway on that than your financial statements. So we'll be getting that done in short order. So those are all the different reports and opinions we have to issue that represent your information. The last deliverable report we have is, the one with the colorful cover, is what's called our Audit Results Letter. What that is, is our communications as the auditor to you as the governing body. In that packet, it's a whole assortment of required communication we have to make as part of the audit process. Instead of issuing them piecemeal in different documents, we consolidate them all in the one report. It includes a lot of different things related to our responsibilities, your responsibilities for the audit processes, the governing body, kind of big overview of what our audit plan is, what we look at, what's risky versus not risky, and if everything went according to plan. You know, also, there are some informal recommendations we have in their best practices along with if we did have any significant reportable findings that would have been that previous government auditing standard report, it'd also have to be recommunicated in here as well. Glad to report, the report is very boring. That's a good thing. So whereas the audit opinion is the gold star, thumbs up, great job, we did it, right? This letter is not designed to give you kudos. It's designed to tell you when things go wrong. So that, when I say that letter's boring, that means things went well. That means there were no major risks. There were no indications of fraud or not being able to get information from management or, you know, difficulties in the course of it, or things that didn't go according to plan, like bad stuff, right? And really, you can see as you read that, it's a lot of, nothing happened. This didn't happen. Nothing we found here. That's great. So as you read that, it's very negatively oriented. But take that as things went according to plan and went well because we don't have anything big in there to talk about tonight. So there's a bunch in there. There's a lot of the required communications in there as well. One of the last things I always like to remind you, and it's kind of baked into that letter, is, you know, in the end, while we work with Chris and his team, every day-to-day, you're the ones who hired us. We work and report to you. So not just tonight, but any other time. If you ever have a question or want to talk to us about anything at all, we are always available. So with that, that concludes my comments. And any questions you have?
Turn it over to the board for any questions?
Yes. Could you just repeat the name of the document that we're still waiting on that's in the Single Audit Report?
So the, the Single Audit Report is, that's the report that's not issued yet.
Correct.
That Government Auditing Standards Report, that couple, two-pager that, that we kind of have as a printout for you, that will be integrated into the report when we issue it. It'll just be the same exact report. We just have to issue that simultaneously with the financial statements. So normally, we do all of it together, right? But because of this delay that we can't control, we have to issue it on its own, and then we'll bake it into that report when we issue the whole thing later on.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mrs. Miller?
I just have a general question. So we're facing a leadership transition, as you, as you saw. Is there anything we should do differently? Anything we should be watching or documenting just specific to transition times?
During, when there is a transition role, it's obviously making sure, it's a great time to reevaluate, right? Just in general. Not even that things are not being done too effective, but seeing and taking, you know, kind of that person's perspective and their strengths and weaknesses and evaluating, hey, how are we structured? Now, superintendent's obviously a big role. So it's, you know, from top down. I think in any leadership role, management role, it's a time to reevaluate or evaluate where you're at and where, if it's where you want to be. I think looking at the processes, who's, and again, this is more from the financial-oriented mind of who's reviewing and approving, who has access to things? Should they have all that control and access? Should you have separations of responsibilities? You know, that's very much in our internal control, financial business office mindset. But there are elements of that that also carry forward to any type of leadership transition. So it's really just going in with fresh eyes. And that'll also come from the new superintendent as well in terms of, you know, how he wants to do things slightly different than your current superintendent, right? Because everybody has their own different approach. So I think the key is trust but verify everything. That's always my, my recommendation, is that you trust, you put trust and faith into every leader that you hire and contract with. You trust them, but you always have to verify it. So it's just as part of that process, it's being ingrained in how you work with everything, prior to how you're doing it. So it's just making sure that you, you know, are giving them the power that they need to do their job, but also making sure that you understand how that's being done and whether it's in alignment, what your objectives are.
So I'm just going to follow that. So you say trust and verify. Is there anything specific that we should be looking at? Measures, indicators, anything specific?
From a non-financial aspect, I'm getting way outside of my lane. From a financial aspect, obviously, Chris provides you the budgets, and you work with that as part of an annual process. And making sure you're in alignment with that, obviously, is, if you're, I don't, I can't remember talking, hey, where you are occurring your collective bargaining agreements. Obviously, that's a big part of the overall process, looking where you're going and where that's being negotiated. And looking at your overall funding and how you're spending. My mind's all finance. That's kind of where I know. I think ultimately, it's looking at your performance. Things like the Financial Profile Score and looking at the trends for those is important. Just looking at your fund balances year over year and how they are looking to grow or sustain, or spend down if you have strategic spending, like your capital plans, things like that. That's a good, from a financial metric, to see where you are from a financial health standpoint and always be looking at. And looking at things on a monthly basis, right? If you're getting reports on a monthly basis that show you how things are going, isn't it, is it what you expected, right? I think the unexpected is always to keep our open forest. Well, I don't understand that. Or what is this? This is not part of our budget, not part of what we thought, you know, surprise. Those are all these things that, not that they're wrong, but you always want to keep an eye out for and make sure you understand. It's part of that, especially when you have new things going on. Because with new people and new, in, you know, higher roles, there's always something different. So just making sure you're comfortable with those new directions and new ways of doing things, or just things that arise during the course of that transition and kind of adjustment period.
All right. So I did get through some of this before the meeting started. On page nine, you mentioned that it's a kind of a recommendation that we expand the district business office by one, by one person, qualified finance staff. What do you, what type of a role would that person be taking on that you can foresee how to, like, I assume it's going to be splitting some of the duties up initially, right?
Correct, correct. So the way our observation is based upon what we see at other districts of your size and how your business office runs right now. It's kind of the Chris and Marco show, right? I mean, that's how things are, and they do a great job mitigating risk. So we look at this from who has the various responsibilities and where are we finding where maybe you can't implement best practices? There's a lot of compensating controls, alternative procedures that you guys do to reduce risk, but it's never as good as the real deal of, hey, this person does this, this person reviews and approves this. Right now, you really don't have that level of flexibility with what is effectively a two-person show. And because of that, and we're used to seeing it, again, districts your size, there's a higher headcount. And that's just kind of being blunt about it. So often, we see it smaller districts, where it's like, hey, you should really have another person, but it's not feasible because they're so small. There's not enough work to go around for that extra person. Based upon our observations for you guys and, and kind of what we see elsewhere of similar and like-size and, you know, similarly operated community consolidated districts, there's plenty to do. And there's a lot that, I know they lift on that, you know, impact them and when we come in, make it harder on them. That is a result that there is definitely some stretching of responsibilities because they have to. And having an extra head would allow them to integrate some best-practice controls, further reduce risk, allow them to really do the things that they're supposed to be doing instead of doing things they have to do, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. LaCroy?
I was just going to add that one of the big parts of the verify part of trust but verify is why you're here today, is the board has engaged you to help them to verify.
Yep, absolutely.
You may have been being modest about that, but that's why you're here. And the other things you talked about are more of a strategic thing, right? You know, what is, what is the strategy we have with, do we have capital spend? But, but the actual accounting audit stuff, that's why you guys are here and engaged by the board.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next, under our Finance Committee portion here, we've got an update on the five-year projections. Back over to you, Mr. Wellman.
I got two presentations. I'm going to do them sitting down for the Finance Committee here. Sorry. Okay. Good evening, members of the Finance Committee. Tonight, we'll be reviewing five-year financial projections. As always, these projections are designed to help us understand where we're headed financially based on what we know today. We're also recognizing that projections are influenced by a wide range of variables beyond our control. As with all our financial decision-making, our five-year projection process is guided by the district's mission, powering learners, creating equity, and cultivating community. And this work directly connects to our strategic plan goals and board bases. So I'll talk a little bit about the projections, how we build them. Five-year projections help us understand trends, anticipate challenges, and evaluate decisions, not just based on today, but based on the long-term impact. This allows the board to make informed, responsible financial decisions to spot educational priorities whilst maintaining fiscal stability. The models used in this projection rely on Frontline Analytics. Used to be Forecast Five, but it was purchased by Frontline. And with all the non-information, including, we have the, the most updated information we can. We have the fiscal year '25, '26 budget, which was approved in September. We have the levy that was just approved, well, will be approved in the next agenda items. It's been presented to you. And then we have the audited fund balances, which we just discussed. In addition to that, we have current collective bargaining agreements in their current form. And we have every known major cost driver, such as, which I will talk in a little bit more detail about, such as transportation, health insurance, and special education. So we have a CPI of 2.9. So the reason why I have 2.9 used in the future levy of 2026 is because that's the last known value I have. So that was September's. I don't know if we're going to have an October value because of the federal government just didn't calculate it. And I'm not joking. We don't know if we're going to have one. We might just skip a month and just jump straight to the following month. This is the world we live in. And then, so that's our most updated value, which will be used in the levy of 2026. And then estimates for '27 through '2030 are 3%. Just mentioned that we budget fully staffed, meaning that every position, we assume it's filled. We assume it's filled with the FTE at the beginning of the school year, and it's, all the increases are based on the current agreements with the GFT and the PSRP. We have made several assumptions. So one of the assumptions, which I've been alluding to over the last two to three years, is that we will eventually become a Tier Two district. So I am making that assumption right now that in 2028, the district will actually leave Tier One and will become a Tier Two district. Now, that might be an indication of good things, that we are moving in the right direction, but it means we get half the tier money going forward. So we're currently getting around $1.2 million. There's a Tier One district every year. If we become a Tier Two district, we'll get $600,000. So just want you to remember that number. And it's compounded because it's held almost from the previous year. So that's just illustrative. The reason why I've moved us to a Tier Two in 2028, Jason, is because we're currently at 70%, and I think we'll move to 80%, which will just move us into Tier Two. Oh, they're just, they're just example numbers, right?
Are we near the absolute?
Over, over three years, it's $1.8 million. Can you know the real? Yeah, the real absolute, yes. So. So, so one of the things that we talked about last year with Tier One and Tier Two money was the effect of CPS. Remember, we talked about that? CPS fell back into Tier One. So we have this extra money because they were a Tier Two district. And then all of a sudden, they fell back into Tier One. So they swelled up under the $65 million. And so everyone's Tier One money went down. So it really depends on what the pot is. It just gets exhausted through Tier One and then goes to Tier Two, and then what's remaining goes to Tier Three and so on. Okay. Then we have other assumptions. We have everything at 4% outside of, well, transportation at four. We have two collect, two agreements that we've just recently agreed to with Durham Transportation for 4%. So I've extrapolated that through the five-year projection. Health insurance, big increase was not anticipated. We have bounced around over the last couple of years between going between 7% and large, and large increases. We, the last, the last projection last year, we had it much, much lower based on our current trend. The cooperative has issued a memorandum to all the, all the members, EBC, all the members stating that we should be expecting a 17% to 22% increase. Driven not just by trend through the entire, that, that, not based on the Blue Crush, Blue Shield, Blue Book. So that's the entire middle market of Blue Crush, Blue Shield renewals. But it's, it's driven by a lot of farmer increases. So there's a lot of GLPs which are driving costs. There's a lot of pharmaceutical changes which people are being able to, allowed to take through their HMOs. So that, that's a large cost driver in terms of actual experience that's, that's being experienced through actual renewals. And so that trend will be reflected highly likely in our renewal next year. So we put 17% in because that's what we've got to do. Special education tuition. We actually budgeted this year for a 17% increase for SEDOL, which was a large increase. And we're budgeting for another 15% next year. I presented information to you how our tuition has effectively doubled over the last eight years, going from about $2.5 million to about $5 million. And I don't see any change in that currently. We go next? It's not moving. Can you move it? Okay, so this is just a summary of kind of a few things I've talked about. I'm going to be presenting to you a fund balance history, a look back. So in, could you go to the next slide? Okay. This is the, a look back that I wanted to start with. So based in fiscal year '21, '22, we saw a slight increase in our operating fund balance. This was the last year we ended with an operating surplus prior to the referendum. So the reason for that was because we had Essa money. We had lots of other things which were helping the district. We had the good days of federal support. We had National School Lunch Program, which was feeding every student. Then we entered into planned deficit spending from fiscal year 2022 to 2025. During this period, we also issued our DSET bonds. So you can see the difference between the orange line and the blue line. We have the operational line in orange, and we have the, the blue line indicating all funds, which includes debt service and those capital, the capital amounts that we spent. That increased our overall fund balance. Those bonds would have been 100% spent down right now. So as we go into the next project, actually looking into the projection, it's been fully expended. What did we do with that money? We, we put a new roof at Avon, Prairie View, Woodview, Frederick. We put a building automation system in all buildings. New chillers at Frederick and Prairie View, and new bylas at GMS. So really, the most essential capital work that was needed for the whole district. So in summary, the operational drawdown from 2022 to '25 was intentional and allowed us to sustain operations through a three-year contract with the GFT and the PSRP, where we give a 6-6-4 increase for all staff. This was expected, as I stated, but it did contribute to the Standard and Poor's credit rating being adjusted from AA+ to AA in May of 2025, just based on that erosion of fund reserves. I just wanted to show this timeline. This timeline I've not updated because it's an old slide, but it, it relates directly to the March of 2024 referendum, which was an operating levy referendum, as you know, and provided the additional funding and resources for our capital funding. So as you know, we've issued $17 million in debt certificates. We'll be, we'll receive them on December 2nd, excuse me, and we'll support the implementation of our long-range facility plan. I just want you to remember that when you look at the next graph. Okay. So this brings us into the, into the forward-looking projection and the uncertainty that we continue to face. While the model reflects all known information, we do need to acknowledge the significant uncertainty that still exists at the state and federal funding landscape. As of today, we still don't know what will happen with Title III, and we still don't know what will happen with Title I Part A, or several of the federal grant programs that have historically been stable foundational supports for schools. As you know, there's active discussion at the federal level about moving special education out of the U.S. Department of Education entirely. If that does occur, which is looking likely, it may come with reduced funding, regulatory restructuring, or other consequences that we can't predict today. So any one of these changes, even alone, along a multiple occurring at the same time could materially impact the district's long term financial outlook and would require adjustments to future strategic planning. As of right now, this is the operating, um, line going from twenty five through fiscal year thirty one. And as you can see, we're issuing a large amount of debt certificates, seventeen million, five and then ten to get to, sorry, and then fifteen, sorry. Seventeen, five and fifteen over three years with the spend occurring down through fiscal year twenty nine. We know what that money's being spent on. It's being spent on libraries. It's being spent on student support spaces and they'll be spent on the remainder of that, all those different mechanical and things that we need to be spending on as part of our long range plan. So where did that come from? There were direct commitments from the referendum. So addressing capital needs and improving safety and security. So a big part of that seventeen million dollars is being spent on safety and security projects at our buildings. Continues to attract trade and retain quality teachers. And the third commitment was maintaining programming class sizes. As I've already stated, the district has issued seventeen million debt certificates, which will be received next week, which will fund the long range facility plan. And then putting those two together. So now we've got the five year look back. We've got the five year look forward. You can see the trajectory of the district. We have the ESSA year, the final year of ESSA through twenty twenty one, twenty two. We have planned deficit spending. And then we see the referendum inflection point in fiscal year twenty five. It's not enough to pull the district out of its decline. So some takeaways. With the new levy in place, continue monitoring, the five year model does not return the district to its full structural balance. However, with, however, we do need to think about our future credit rating. If we do not eventually rebuild that fund balance probably through twenty twenty nine, we, and become recompliant within the board policy, um, we may be looked at future downgrades. As always, we'll continue to revise projections as new data, legislation or economic conditions emerge. Our goal is to remain transparent, proactive and disciplined in ensuring financial stability and supports that, support strong educational outcomes. And that's my presentation.
Questions or comments from the board?
So this will probably be an, uh, probably a long, a long process to do. When was the last time we looked at the special education services that we are getting to see if there are alternatives out there that are providing the same quality of service, but maybe at a different price range? Either bringing more students into the schools that are outplaced. I don't know the makeup that are makeup or the reason why some of the children are outplayed PlayStation that they have the biggest needs, right? So have we, could we, at least in the future, possibly look at that as a whole and see what our options are to maybe revamp that for the program? You know, if we're looking at doing, you probably go, oh, boy. But I, I'm just, because it's our biggest, one of the biggest drivers in our cost increases at fifteen percent, even if we find a way to shave a little bit off of that would help immensely. Um, but again, I don't want to sacrifice the, the services that we provide that's a no nonstarter for me. It's important for them to get what they need. So that's just one of the things that I, as I sit through the presentation and I see the big numbers, the insurance part, I mean, my work got an eighteen percent increase. It started out at twenty eight. Somehow they got it down to eighteen. Don't ask me how, but they did. So the seventeen didn't surprise me any, um, because that's how things are going. And then with the federal mess up down there, that's making it even worse. So, um, I, I think we need to continue to work on finding areas to save at all costs. Well, at an all cost, not at the cost of staff or students, where we can say we can be able to find the places to save.
So can I, can I just jump in on special ed?
Sure, go ahead and then I'll make a statement.
So, um, we have, the district has to be quite careful in coding special education expenditures because each year we have a test called the maintenance of effort. So it's not always easy or even legal for a school district to reduce those expenditures. There are only certain things that we actually are able to reduce them on. Um, salaries of retired teachers and capital expenditures are a couple of them just spring to mind. So the district has to be ca, very careful because we could actually lose our idea of funding. Just there, those are put in place as safeguards so school districts don't cut the most vulnerable of their student population. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm throwing it out there that we, it has to be done through the lens of Moe. For sure.
Thank you for mentioning that. And I just wanted to answer a little bit more globally. Um, Jim, I appreciate you bringing that up. So, Board, it's really important for you to know that this information is brand new to us. Um, there has been absolutely no time at all to consider, um, you know, where we might go from here. So I just want to make, and when I say brand new, I mean really, really brand new. I think, Chris, you got that insurance information just a couple, few days ago, right? Yeah.
Yes, this, this week.
I just had a, um, I keep thinking about the end of A Christmas Carol when Scrooge asks like, are these the visions, like, can they be changed? Um, or, because we're working off of assumptions, right? Like, so, and, and that's the only thing you can do based on the information that you have. Is it possible if things change at the federal level if they don't got, you know, they don't move the, um, the special education out of the Department of Education? Like, is it, is it possible that we would not see the sharp decline if things were to change at that level?
I don't anticipate that and I don't think anybody in our world is anticipating that. Okay, okay. So, so I think one of the things in the, probably the slide three or four, I said, this is not going to be exact and over five years, it's definitely not going to be exact because if I look back over the projections back when I was hired in twenty twenty one, things were a lot rosier because we've had heavily compounding, highly inflationary increases that no one has ever seen in the history of the United States. And that's me trying to be as, we, the increases have been large in all the major areas. And I look at it as almost gravity. It's like gravity is pulling the, the graph down because of the weight of those expenditures that the district has to do. We have to feed our students. We have to clean our buildings. We have to transport our students and we have to have the best teacher we can in every classroom. So when you talk about cuts, where do you cut? I mean, there are things, so only certain areas that we can look at. So that's, that's the difficulty that we are trying to be the best school system we can, but we're doing it with not enough, not enough funding.
Yeah, and, um, we also got hit with a few of those CPIs that were point two and point three. They were really low, right?
Point eight and point seven, yeah.
Point eight, point seven. They were really low. Now, that's the max we could actually ask for, right? Or get. So with being in a PTEL or tax cap district or county, um, it's P, it's CPI or five percent, whichever is lowest. And that's what hurt, that hurts when it's, historically, it's two point two percent or at least it was for twenty or thirty years, it was about two per, two point two percent. And having the point seven and a point eight back to back really hurt everybody's finances. Like, every taxing district got hit with that. Having the bigger ones that we had where we were able to actually get up to five percent was better, but we were still losing two percent behind CPI, right? So everybody, all the expenses went up seven percent and we could only get up to five percent. So we lost, we even lost there, but at least it was able to kind of help sustain that a little bit. So, yeah, so we had seven percent in twenty one and six and a half in twenty two. So as, as that kind of ebbs and flows, because of the way the tax cap is written for, um, Illinois, and it kind of, it really hampers the ability of taxing districts to raise the amount of money that they actually need to function and puts everybody in behind the eight ball. And that's why we're up with a referendum, right? Because now, the good thing with the referendum, we got it passed because the community supports us, but we have to be very smart with the money that they entrust us with.
So I just want to thank Dr. Glickman, you and Chris for all the work you did on the referendum. I think this would look a whole lot more scary if we hadn't passed that referendum. And also thank you to Chris for calling attention to the opportunity of, to look at additional property because I think even without that, we would be in a much more scary place. So, thank you. What's that? Yeah. I guess my question is just, I understand that the information is new and you need time to process. When do we start talking about what to do next? What, what do you need in order to do that?
I think one of the things we probably need to do is think about scheduling a finance committee meeting sooner than the one that we have next scheduled. Um, so we will, I think we need to, um, do a little talking and thinking, but, um, don't be surprised if we land one on your calendars, um, right, coming up. Because I think we don't have another one scheduled right now till March. Is that right? Uh, I, wait, I know. I have that information. One moment. Um, the next one. Say it again?
February twenty five.
Yeah, so right. It, it, we'll need to be sooner than that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what I have at the moment. I mean, we really, when I say new, I mean, this afternoon conversation, so, um, we'll, we'll be coming back to you for that.
Chris, I was trying to figure out how to reconcile to what seemed to be disparate pieces of information, right? The assumption that we're going to be going to a tier two status at some point in your assumption, which is indicative of a healthy financial district with what I see on that graph. And is the reason those two things are both true in this case because they're kind of divorced from each other? I mean, can you help me reconcile that? Those two what seem to be contradictory stories?
So they're both underfunded, right? We're not talking about a district which is hundred percent funded. We're talking the difference between having thirty percent as a deficit and twenty percent. I mean, it's still a large amount of money. It was fifty million dollars and now it's probably ten. But ten million over five years is still fifty million. So one of the things I, when we were going through the referendum was when we had a, a committee of individuals who sat in this room said to us, hey, why don't you go for more? We went for what would pass and we went the smart way, knowing that it, and it only passed by fifty two and forty eight percent with flat. So the district did not go for a hundred percent adequacy. We didn't ask for another ten million per year. We didn't ask for an extra fifty million over those five years. So that's the issue, the issue, that it's just that literal gap between moving a few percentage adequacy points and it's, it's, but it's still, but it's still an adequacy fund. Yes. Yeah, it doesn't change anything. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good thing because we're going in the right direction, but it just means we get less money next year. It's a, I don't know what to say. It's, it's not great.
So I've been away from the, the pieces of information and looking at this thing, but with what's going on at the federal level, has there been any momentum or at the state level to kind of fill the gap? Is anyone aware of legislative efforts to kind of step in and say, you know, we live in a blue state that values public education, it seems like? And, uh, anyone hearing anything about the state doing anything down? I'm not seeing anyone shake their head yes.
I mean, the state is very proud of continuing to give us three hundred million, which is worth less and less every year because that does not increase the cost of CPI. And so it's starting to fall flat for me. It gets brought up as a point of pride every year. We're so proud to maintain this level of funding. But what they're not saying is, it was three hundred million five years ago and how much has inflation gone up? So it's, you know, the, whatever that's called, right? The future, present, past value money. Oh. So there's that. Um, we've been trying to advocate for mandated categoricals because those aren't in a evidence based funding and that is what is killing us is the mandated categoricals. And so I think there's been some effort to like pull mandated categoricals into our advocacy. But I think them, it comes to the fact that the pie is still too small at the state level. I think that's, because if we get three hundred and fifty million, then direct care workers for disabled people get fifty million less. You know what I mean? Because we are not, we're constrained for making the pie bigger. That's my understanding of it right now, Jason. I don't, I don't know if that's helpful, but, yeah, I mean. Not yet, not yet. So, I mean, for me, that, uh, that's where it leads me is what's the hue and cry? There needs to be a hue and cry because we, like, like Chris said, what do we, what do? I mean, we've switched to LED lights. Okay, that's not fifty million dollars, you know? Meanwhile, we, yeah, we, like, we can't risk, we can't fall behind and have another GMS situation. Like, we've, we've got to keep putting roofs on things, you know? So, yeah, that's where it takes me anyway. We're going to talk about the sales tax in a minute. That's something I, I can't imagine that it's not a lot, but it's something, so.
Okay, now the one percent sales tax, yes?
All right. Okay. Uh, today we're presenting a proposal regarding the county sales facility tax, sales tax. So I'm just going to call it the CSFT. It's a lot. Um, this is an important discussion item for our finance committee this evening. Again, as with all our financial decisions in this discussion, uh, we're guided by the district's mission, empowering learners, creating equity and cultivating community. And this directly aligns again with all those different strategic goals and board policies, specifically our commitment to rev, to review, expand and clarify financial practices to increase transparency and communication. Okay, so I'm going to start with the ballot language. This is the question for voters as it would appear. Uh, the CSFT proposal would present a question to the voters, which would appear on the ballot as follows. I'm going to let you read it. Uh, this clearly defines the tax rate and the limited exclusive use of the funds. So the purpose, this is what it is and how the funds can be used. The fundamental purpose of the CSFT is to establish a sustainable revenue source for school facility needs. It allows voters to approve a sales tax increase of up to one percent. It doesn't have to be one percent. It can be increments up to one percent. And the revenue is distributed to districts based on the student enrollment. Uh, critically, the funds are restricted to capital improvements. This includes things like new construction, building additions, renovation, repair of existing facilities and Kierras such as safety and security improvements and energy efficiency projects. It cannot be used for salaries and general operating costs. One thing I would say though, if we were successful with this, we could offset costs. So we could use the money to fund our operations and maintenance and levy more in the education fund. So if it can't be directly, indirectly, it's subsidizing the education fund. Yeah, absolutely.
It says renovation and repair of, of existing facilities. Does it also include the grounds that were responsible for maintaining?
Yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah. Could be grounds, for sure. Uh, why it matters, um, it offers several vital benefits for us. I listed several there. The two I wanted to highlight, it's local investment, uh, revenues remaining Lake County and flow directly to our district, ensuring local control how our facility funds are spent. And it can be used for property tax relief. One of the things that you are able to do, and several districts may do this if they don't require it, but it, but it was successful on the ballot, you can actually, uh, abate that amount each year. The sales tax is paid by both residents and visitors to Lake County. The sales tax is paid by both residents and visitors to Lake County, and because we are not specifically a area that has a huge commercial base, that might be attractive. And obviously helps diversify the funding base and reduces pressure on local property taxes overall. So, understanding the process for the ballot placement is key. For this question to reach for voters, a local board, that would be you and other local boards, must pass a resolution requesting that the CSFT be placed on the ballot. Crucially, districts representing at least fifty-one percent of the country, of the countywide, student enrollment must adopt these resolutions. So, if the top three to four school districts all voted yes, that might actually be enough. Ones filed with the, the Lake County Board, the Board, the County Board will informally places the question on the ballot. Here's the timeline. The target election is November of twenty-twenty-six. To meet this, resolutions are due to the Count, to the Lake County Board by August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-six. If we are going to go forward this, we would recommend the adoption would occur be by June thirtieth, to allow ample time for coordination with other districts. And if approved by voters in November of twenty-six, the collection distribution of funds would begin on January one of twenty-twenty-seven. So summarize, collaboration amongst all Lake County districts is critical to successfully reach the fifty-one percent enrollment threshold required. We must begin early coordination with both the, the County Board and our peer districts. Transpiring communication with the community would be essential for building support. And ultimately, the CFT provides a reliable local funding source for our facilities. If I just put this on here, we don't have to make a decision today, I just want it to be dramatic, like, decision time. It's now come to decision, you know, you must decide now. I just said you don't have to, so, but we do have time. The question before you is, does the, does the Board wish to pass a resolution based on that timeline? And if we do, we should start advocating towards that.
So I want to just add one more piece of information about that. Thank you so much for that presentation, Chris. So, all, this conversation is happening at board tables across Lake County. And so, we've actually been asked to ask all of you, basically to take your temperature, to see if this is something that you're interested in, so that the county can make a collective decision whether or not they'd want to move forward. So that's really what we're asking tonight, it's nothing for you to vote on, but just, we, we need to know, kind of like, have a discussion and maybe take a straw poll about your thoughts, so that we can share that with our other Lake County administrative colleagues and inform them where our board is.
Has this been driven by the ROE or just other?
Actually, no, some other boards just started, no, not the ROE, other boards started talking about it and recognized that fifty-one percent of boards need to, a pass a resolution before it would go on to, on to the ballot. And so, in order to decide whether we should consider, exactly, we need to kind of know what the different school districts are thinking.
Can I just say one more final thing? I don't have the exact number, but I believe it's a hundred and fifteen thousand students in Lake County, so we're about three thousand six hundred, so we're about three percent. So, we are not going to be enough, clearly, we would take a, a number of school districts to be able to get to that fifty-one percent. Just wanted to be, be aware of that, kind of, we're talking about a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Right, and thank you, I didn't say that correctly, it's not fifty-one percent of school districts, right? Thank you.
It's, it's based on enrollment, so if the three to four largest school districts all vote yes, fifty-one percent is done, it's on the ballot, we don't have to do anything.
How would we, and I know you're not ready to quantify, but could you talk us through how you would quantify the benefit to the district?
So I reached out to a friend at one-twenty-seven who presented this a month ago, and he actually did it, so I stole his numbers, which is quite nice. So he estimated, this is Dr. Singh who made this estimate, so this is just an estimate. He stated that there's about eighty-one million dollars which is collected in Lake County using one point seven five. So, one percent would be about forty-six million dollars, and then he divided that by his enrollment over that hundred and fifteen thousand, so one-twenty-seven would get just over a million dollars. We have actually higher enrollment than them, so we would get one point four million dollars. Total estimate based on extrapolation, don't know the number, but that's just a data point right now. One point four million per year? Per year?
So it's distributed equally among all, like, by the student?
So we would get, based on thirty-six hundred divided by a hundred and fifteen thousand, that would be the percentage that we would get of the forty-six million.
So, sales taxes are often regressive, so I'm wondering if this one would include groceries because the state, starting in January twenty-twenty-six? What's that? I don't know if you did, but, which, go ahead, correct me, which part?
I, I checked today, I think you asked me, and it doesn't not include groceries. It has, it has a bunch of exemptions, and from memory, it's like groceries and farm goods.
Yeah.
I don't know why farmers don't exempt, but they are.
Okay. So is there, we've got the...
Medicine as well, I think.
The data center coming in, and to my knowledge, the school districts are not receiving additional revenue from that, is there, but there will be economic activity associated with the data center? Specifically, construction materials, other materials like that, so it, will that, is there a way to target industrial regulations rather than residential? Because this is going to converge right when the referendum hits.
Right, so...
So is there a way to target it, so it's minimizing the impact on residents?
So the, the T, you said with the T-five, the T-five is outside of our boundary, so that's, the first thing is, it's not giving us any extra EV. It does fall under one-twenty-sevens, but it's not under ours. In terms of the sales tax, it would have to be one of those items which would fall under that, and they would have to be purchased in Lake County for it to be captured under that sale, under those transactions. So the T-five was buying things, I don't know, elsewhere, Arizona, I don't know, bringing them in, depending on what that company is, they wouldn't fall under that. So, I, I'm not aware of how the sales tax would correlate directly with the T-five. I can't think of a specific way unless they were purchasing directly in Lake County. Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know where to quantify that either.
I've got a question for you, Chris. So the language on the ballot says voters are approving up to one percent. Do we know how that actual percentage or fraction of a percent will be calculated? I'll wait until I get to pull that out.
I think, I think, I think that, I think that number, that one percent is whatever is agreed on by the boards to put on the ballot. So, we could put up to one percent on the ballot. So it could be, it could be a quarter percent, it could be fifty percent, it could be three-quarters percent, or it could be one percent. So, that's how that number, it, it has to be put on there, it's not, everybody would have to decide what number, percent.
Sorry, that, that's not the question, thank you.
Yeah, I was just helping.
No, it's one, it's one ballot question, one ballot question. Up to, up to one percent.
I don't see how we cannot support it, I, I mean, I, it would be malpractice not to. Yeah, sure, right, I would agree. I mean, I would, I would be in favor of it.
So, I, when we had our last Lake Division meeting over there in Lottspur, we had two state reps there talking with Mary Adler and I forget what the other lady's name was. Yeah, and the other one. So, I, I talked to a couple of them, and I actually asked about this, this sales tax. About thirty-eight other counties in Illinois have already passed this tax, or this sales tax to referendum, and I, I made a simple question for them, as, is there any appetite down at the state level to just make it blanket white state instead of having every county go through this process? And I got the political answer, it's election time, and nobody has the appetite to go and put more sales tax on. So, it is going to be kind of up to the, each county to get this going, but I was trying to kind of prompt them to at least think about it.
How does it work in terms of getting all, like, is there a two-thirds majority that would carry the vote? How would that work if you had some boards opt out? Is it all in or how does that work? Like, if we said we didn't want to, does that mean that we wouldn't get the, the slice of the one percent if it should pass?
No, I mean, it's, it, it will be countywide, it's really about whether or not there's enough of an appetite between our boards to actually even put it on the ballot. Yeah, good question, though, yeah.
So, I have, in my research for this, there are districts down in South Illinois that don't say they don't want it, even though they've had it, and so they just abate it immediately. They immediately get, take the money and they reduce the property taxes of the taxpayers. So, if you didn't want it, that would be the most obvious thing to do. If a district school board was adamant that they didn't want to accept that money, they would reduce, they would use the, the county tax to reduce the taxes of their actual constituents. That'd be the way that they would do that.
Which gives you the option of taking it if you need it, or abating it back, right?
Yeah.
So if you had a project coming up, you could use it for that project. If not, you could abate it back and roll the property taxes, you know, on a year-by-year basis.
I know, yeah, just on your resolution.
Okay, so, we will need to get back to our cohorts to talk about this. So I'm feeling like I'm getting a consensus of a positive feeling about moving forward with this, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, the next step for us would be potentially to put a res, a resolution, and that would be what you would be voting for, so we'll come back to you on that piece. Okay.
I do also think it's kind of a point of advocacy that although it's not on groceries, it is nonetheless regressive. Shame on our state for putting us in this position, and I think it's a point of advocacy, like, look what we have to do. So, just something to think about.
All right, we are going to move on to our action items. Ready? Thank you, Mr. LaCroy. It's good to see you at the table again. See you soon, my friend. Good night, Mr. La... Okay, we've got some action items to go through. The first one, do I need to do each of these separate bullet points separately under that main one there? Or just each main one? Each main one, okay. I could say includes this, 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 and this, you want me to do that? Okay, okay. Not each separate one, right, on that larger, okay, okay. Okay, the first action item, a motion, I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five tax levy in a total amount of forty-five million ninety-eight thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, which also includes the certificate of tax levy, the resolution regarding amounts necessary to be levied for the year twenty-twenty-five, the resolution to levy certain special taxes for special education district IMRF purposes, the resolution to levy working cash tax, the resolution to levy tort tax, and the resolution authorizing a supplemental property tax levy to pay the principal of and interest on outstanding limited bonds of the district.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Weedman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Hune?
Aye.
And Halverson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five district audit.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
Hune?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And Nash?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, everybody. Finally, I need a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda, which also includes the personnel agenda that was sent to us earlier today.
I'll move. A second.
Okay.
Brayden?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Hune?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
And Weedman?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, everybody. Finally, I need a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda, which also includes the personnel agenda that was sent to us earlier today.
I'll move. A second.
Okay.
Brayden?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Hune?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
And Weedman?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We do not have any unfinished business, we do not have any new business, so we have topics for future agenda items at this point. Dr. Glickman?
Yes, well, first of all, as we just talked about, we, we're going to need to add a finance committee meeting to one of our upcoming meetings, so Chris and I will be talking about that, and I'll be in touch with you. In the meantime, December seventeenth, we have our Park Campus Wolves coming, they will be presenting and be at the board table, we're also going to be celebrating a lot of our athletes that night, we'll do an approval of bid awards, approval of seniority lists, and approval of student fees. We are hoping to have the information we need to have a discussion about our intercoms project, but we won't know until we get closer to that, and also a discussion about door access, the door access project. And again, these are the kinds of safety-related projects that we have been talking about that are, you know, that come out of our funding from the referendum. January fourteenth, we may have intercoms approval, if we have discussion in December, we'll see, door access project approval, and we expect to be able to bring a draft of a calendar, school calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven, yeah, and discuss that, which, moving into January twenty-eighth, we hope to be able to then approve. And we are actually ahead of where we usually are in terms of approving a calendar, so we're glad about that. We'll also have our GMS Panthers with us on January twenty-eighth, so that'll be nice, and I don't have anything right now to share past January twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Dr. Glickman. Do we have any public comments? Did we drive them away? Okay. Okay, we do have a closed session this evening, so I need a motion to enter into closed session this evening in accordance with Public Act Five, Illinois CS one twenty slash two, paragraph C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. I need a motion.
So moved. A second.
Hune?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
And Brayden?
Aye.
Okay, very good, we do not anticipate any additional meeting business after the closed session, so we will adjourn directly from that. Thank you, everybody, and good night.